All this meeting of the October Irelde Stateful School Board to order. As you'll notice, Dr. Cash is not with us. He's dealing with a personal problem that he'll have straightened out really soon, we hope, and he'll be back with us. Like we normally do, as we start our meeting, if we can start it with a moment of silence, you can think and pray in your own right, in your own mind, anyway, for our school system and the kids that we deal with, and that we do the right things and the right decisions. So let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Let's stand for the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. Be seated. Let us begin with our consent agenda. And the first item, A, is the budget amendments. Ms. White.
Good evening. You have before you tonight the budget amendment, the first budget amendment for this fiscal year. We discussed this in depth at the committee, the whole meeting last Monday. There's an amendment for the state public school fund to adjust our budget to what the state has allotted in certain allotment categories. There are some adjustments to the local current expense fund. The major adjustment was we added a little bit to our use of fund balance, about $53,000, $54,000 for some additional MacBook Airs that we needed to purchase. The federal budget amendment adjusts for some additional federal allotments or some changes to some of our federal allotments. And there is a small change to the capital outlay budget to adjust our county appropriations budget to actual, there was a slight discrepancy there that we needed to correct. And then our other special revenue fund had a budget amendment to adjust for some donations that have been received and for our indirect cost allotment that we will get from child nutrition and for this year's installment of our park grant. Be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Let's move to our personnel report with acceptance and resignations, retirements, rehires, termination, leave of absence, acceptance of classified personnel, licensed personnel, approval of administrative appointments. Dr. LaSagne.
Mr. Kelly, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, you have had the opportunity to review the October personnel report. Are there any questions?
I have some questions. And I'm going to ask the board, or tell you, board members, I'm going to recuse myself of this when we vote on it, as it relates to one of the people mentioned is a relative of mine.
Okay.
But I do have questions. When we're getting the list of names for rehires or whatever, the effective date is, some of them are in July, August, two months prior. Today's, you know, we're in October. Is there a reason?
Some of that is related to paperwork. Everything has to have, just like, a resignation. A lot of times, you'll see it probably more frequently with resignations or if someone changes status, like say, for instance, if they were interim in that position and they moved to full-time permanent, then sometimes you will see a delay because it actually takes a piece of paper to move that in our system. This is also particularly, you will see this during this time, because we have certain categories of employees largely classified. When we have our huge hiring in August, we have to push all the license through, and then there are other employees that come through behind that based on a prioritization for processing for payroll. So sometimes it's a matter of paperwork changes that generates them to the personnel report. So if there are particular people, I can tell you exactly what that is, because I can go back to the piece of paper, tell you the effective date it came in, all of those sorts of things.
My concern is the efficiency. I'm thinking in October, we shouldn't get something that was effective in July or even August, 1st of August. But we can discuss that at another time. The other, let's see, under leaves of absences. The number eight name is the same name as the next to the bottom name. Are those two different names, are people?
Those are probably the same people, but I will have to check just to make sure, because I would actually have to look at their social security number. But keep in mind, even if there is a revision to a previous form for leave of absence and it's within the same period for the personnel report, it's going to show up. It's going to show up twice. With leaves of absences, you always frequently see changes in either, sometimes the beginning date will get paperwork that says one thing, and then say, for example, a surgery move. That generates another piece of paper. If their return date moves, that generates another sheet of paper. If they end up not just being on leave, but then going on, like, short-term disability, that will generate another piece of paper. And if it's all within the framework, often it's on different personnel reports, but it can be on the same.
Well, I think I'm, I don't want any spin. I just, this, these two names, same names, same schools, different effective dates, even if they, if they're the same person, HR should have reconciled that before it gets to us. There shouldn't be a, I mean, even if it was surgery, you should, you HR manager should have reconciled this. We're voting for two different, people named the same thing with two different times.
I understand what you're asking, Ms. Haynes, when you look at it here, but we also have to have a record of tracking of every single one of those. And so, I mean, we have comments for every change that happens for every piece of paper. And the way our software is, our software is outdated. But we can't afford a new system right now, and the way our software is, it's going to pull every single one of those comments. But what I will be glad to do is I will be glad to go through and see if we see dual names, we will try to take them off of the personnel report. But every action has a piece of paper. And that's what generates, there are certain actions that generate it being put on the personnel report. I mean, you could just as easily have a hire and a termination on the same report. You know, you can have multiple actions for the same employee on a report.
I understand that, Dr. LaSagne, but these are in the same leave of absence. That should be reconciled, in my opinion. And on the last is transfers.
Okay.
Some of these, we know the transfers occurred before the school started. I know that.
Right.
And it's October. This paperwork too?
This is paperwork. We often have to reconcile with payroll and then ask the school for pieces of paper back. And we talk to our principals about that a lot, because the personnel actions are generated from the school or the department. And particularly after we get everyone through a payroll, that is when we have to go back and say, we have this that says this in payroll, and this over here that's in HR, what's going on? Oh, I forgot to submit that personnel action form. And so we still have to go back and reconcile those records.
Let me ask, you have a number in the approval of licensed personnel, you have a number of teachers?
Yes.
Do we have all of our slots in all of our classrooms filled with teachers?
We still have a few slots that are still open. We have under 10 now, but we still have a few that we are in the process of hiring.
Oh, I have one more question. The leaves, the resignations, exit interviews, were they done on all these?
Yes, they are sent the completion form for the exit interview. Do we have every employee complete the exit interview? No, but we can get you reporting on the exit interviews if you would like.
Any other questions? You also have had an opportunity to look at the minutes for the committee as a whole and our last Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a correction on the September 8th minutes, September 8th minutes. I think I was quoted in there, suggested 20 percent. I think I actually suggested 10 percent. And I said maybe up to 20, so this is a matter of correction.
Okay, adjust from 20 to 10 percent?
Yes.
Okay. Any other correction to addition to the minutes? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let me, if I may, for just a second, under what might be called a point of order. Last time when we met, we met last Monday night in the committee as a whole meeting, and there was some misunderstanding about some of the things that we did. We had a report come to us, which had to do with law enforcement, which was very good. We had a report about a grant that we were to receive, that the Troutman Police Department received. We had a report and an idea about SROs, and we had a report and an idea about police area and law enforcement in the Troutman area. We talked briefly about a sidewalk and a crosswalk. And all of those things, which were presented by representatives of our law enforcement area, were all very good. I had a call from Mr. Sales and Mr. Loudermilk asking if they had done something incorrectly, and I tried to assure them that they had not. And what we were talking about was simply our in-house procedure for getting things onto our agenda. And that was only, it had nothing to do with how good the report was. In fact, the report was really good. The information was good. We had an incident report, which was very good. All the information was outstanding. The question was, how did it get there? And that had nothing to do with those law enforcement people that we love to death and want to work with and are our partners in trying to prevent all the other things that are going on. So we want to clarify that and ask also if that same group would reassemble and get the information back to us again for the November committee as a whole, so that we could get it on the agenda and all of us have an opportunity to see that before the meeting and then have that presentation again. So we're going to contact all those individuals and see if that can't come about for the November meeting and clarify some of the things, because everything they brought was of importance, and we take it very seriously. We just had a glitch in getting it there, and we want to see it again. I'll ask if anybody else has a comment along that line. Thank you. Then we'll move to recognitions with Susie Weiberg.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And I see that Mr. Sullivan is here now, so tonight, we're doing a very special commendation for a student. This was recommended by faculty, specifically Mr. Ian Sullivan, theater teacher at North High, and this is a first for me. North Irelde High lost their chorus teacher at the end of the 2013-14 school year. For many reasons, the new chorus teacher, who is also here with us tonight, Ms. Smith, she could not begin the year when the rest of us did. But little did Elaine know that young Christopher Lockman had everything under control. Until the 8th of September, when Ms. Smith arrived at North High, Chris led three chorus classes every day. Chris Lockman is a student in two chorus classes and has Mr. Sullivan first block for theater. So Chris's day didn't really change that much, but certainly his leadership did. Chris took it upon himself to prepare music selections for each of the three classes, and he rehearsed with students daily. Mr. Sullivan wanted this recognition for Christopher because of Christopher's attitude, his professionalism, and his initiative. So I would like for Mr. Sullivan to come up, please, and add to any of this, and then the whole rest of the gang is going to come forward as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much. As we know, the substitutes are not always specially trained for areas like chorus, so these students would have sat there doing essentially busy work, because the substitute wouldn't have necessarily piano skills or choral training. And Chris couldn't stand for that idea, so he felt as though those students deserved every bit of energy he could muster. And each day, he played piano, he taught, he formed them into sections and worked with them. I had the pleasure of substituting for one period and watching him work. And I really could not say enough good things about Chris and the initiative he took, and also the way he handled working with his peers. He was incredibly professional and polite with them, and he got back very good work from them. I was very impressed with him. And Chris, if you'd like to come up, I actually have a thank you letter and a gift certificate to the Music Center for you.
Mr. Chairman, if we would, you know, maybe that's an idea, we just start to get about half of our students to teach for us. We could save a lot of money then.
If we could just find them in science and math now, we'd be, thank you very much.
And thank you, Ian, for bringing that to our attention, because sometimes things like that happen, and it gets right past all of us. So now, we all know that new teacher orientation is a crazy, busy time for human resources. The important information that they need to deliver, the number of questions, different personalities they deal with, the buzz and excitement of a new school year. So sometimes we think it's really nice to have someone ride in on a white horse and save the day. Well, we have three community partners who did just that this year, and we want you to know about them. Michelle Davidson is the physician liaison with Charlotte Eye, Ear, Nose, and Throat, and Michelle provided a breakfast and lunch for all 200 new teachers at the orientation. Another breakfast, drinks, and snacks were provided by Craig and Jill Morrow with Erie Morrow Insurance here in Troutman. Craig and Jill also provided the bags for all the teacher goodies. Jean Massey, I don't think Jean made it. She's with Community One Bank, and she's always been a very strong advocate and strong supporter of our schools and our students. Jean has this magical gift in her personal persuasiveness. You cannot say no to her. She manages to find the items for the new teacher goodie bags, and additionally, she is almost always the one behind finding other people in her network to help make these day-long informational sessions a little less stressful on the Human Resources Department. So our thanks to these three community partners for their investment in our staff and our district, and if the Morrows and Michelle would please come forward, I think Mr. Kelly, I know Mr. Kelly, has certificates for you, and I will take Ms. Massey's and deliver that to her.
Mr. Johnson, do you have a community award?
Yes, sir, we do. Thank you, Mr. Kelly, members of the board. You know, it's a very rare occasion that a teacher achieves the milestone of 50 years of service to a school system, particularly serving one school system in North Carolina. But that is the occasion that we're celebrating tonight. So I would like to recognize George Conger, and he has his wife Nancy with him here. George is celebrating 50 years of continuous service to the Irelde Stateful Schools. He spent 35 years as a classroom teacher. He was the psych coordinator for driver's education at West Irelde High School since the school opened in 1974. George graduated from Scotts High School, where he played football, basketball, and baseball. And my notes tell me that he even hit a home run off Hearn Starette. I didn't know that. George received a scholarship to Erskine's College to play basketball and baseball. Later, he transferred to Pfeiffer, where he was on the wrestling team, the track team, and the soccer team. He began his teaching career here in 1961 at Scotts High School. He also taught at North Irelde High School, but most of his time was at West Irelde High School. He has taught health and PE, driver's education, math, US history, special education, science, and biology. He coached basketball, football, baseball, and wrestling. He also served as the athletic director at West Irelde High School. He is known for having coached Jerome Henderson, who played in the NFL and is now coaching for Dallas Cowboys. Jerome still recognizes Coach Conger as his mentor to this day. Dale Fox, who is George's immediate supervisor now on driver's education, said this about George. The North Carolina professional teaching standards outlines five areas that all teachers should excel in, and those areas are: the teacher demonstrates leadership, the teacher establishes a respectful environment for a diverse population of students, the teacher knows the content area that they teach, the teacher facilitates learning for all students, and the teacher reflects on their professional practices. Mr. Fox says that all of these qualities are summarized in the career of George Conger. So tonight, it gives me a great deal of pleasure and a high honor to recognize Mr. George Conger for 50 years of service to the Irelde Stateful Schools. George, if you'll come up, we've got a certificate.
Now move to our non-consent agenda. And the first item, A, is the audited financial statement from Ms. White.
Okay, so last Monday, we reviewed a draft copy of the financial statements. You were provided in your board packet a bound copy of those statements. Nothing changed from what we reviewed Monday. Tonight, we do have Mr. John Rosenthal. He is a partner with our auditing firm of Coffee Lovins, and he will be here to review the statements with you in brevity, because they are very thick. And then, of course, we'll be able to answer any questions that you may have. John?
Good evening. I want to start off with the good news, that your audit report had a clean opinion, no compliance findings, and no material weaknesses in internal control. With that being said, I want to thank Melissa and her staff. You've got a very qualified staff on hand, and they did a great job on getting everything together to get the audit completed. Now, how much detail do we want to go over?
Have you finished yet?
Hopefully not too much. Excuse me, yeah, exactly. I can go fast. Really, my responsibility in this whole 60-some-page package is probably seven or eight pages, but I'll go over a little more than that. On page one is our audit opinion on the financial statements themselves, and it goes over management's responsibilities to prepare the financial statements, the fair presentation of the statements. Our responsibility is expressing opinion on those statements. On the top of page two, under opinions, we express what we call an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. And then it goes on to the management's discussion and analysis. We did not perform any procedures on that. And then on the supplemental schedules, we audited those schedules, so they're fair in relation to those statements also. And let me, I'm skipping over page four to 11, and I'm going to go over 12, the statements, very briefly, just to point out some large items. Page 12 and 13 are the financial statements required by GASB, and they're basically financial statements that you would see a private business put together. Unfortunately for- Unfortunately, for school boards in North Carolina, they don't present an accurate picture, or maybe they do. School boards report the fixed assets, school buildings, buses, but not the debt related to it. The county gets to pick up the debt. So if you were to look at the net assets on these statements, page 12, you've got 104 million in net assets. Well, of that amount, if you look up a third of the way down, 109 million is in your fixed assets. So it's really not, it's not what school boards manage by, but it is required reporting under GASB. Now, one item I would point to you on page 13, under the total column, and this is what you would look at, the third number from the bottom, there's a deficit of $3,663,292, change in net position, which indicates that your net position decreased from the prior year. So that means your net assets available have decreased over the, over the year that we're looking at here. Now, we can get into more detail. I think you already know the answers behind that. Page 14 are the fund financial statements, and that is pretty much what management uses in all, in all school boards in North Carolina to manage the board by, if you will, 14 and 15 and on. A couple of highlights here on page 14. We'll go down, and I, there's a lot of cash, but the cash can get spent in a hurry. If you go down, these statements are presented under accounting standards to where it's either cash or can be converted to cash quickly. It doesn't present long-term assets, or those assets that cannot be converted very quickly. So at the bottom set of numbers, under general fund, there's $6,794,376 in total fund balance. A year ago, you were, I'm thinking, well, I don't have that number, I'm sorry. The unassigned number I do have, the $5,710, and a year ago, you were at $6,600,000. So you had a $900,000 decrease in that unassigned number. A deterioration, if you will, of your net assets. Now, page 15, and this statement pretty much shows how the services the school board provides are funded. And if you look under state public school fund, the second column, you'll see $102 million received from the state of North Carolina. A year ago, that number was 104,700,000, or a decrease of 2.3 million. I think we're all aware of the decreases everybody is facing. So now, if we take that, go over to the general fund, the 31.2 million from the county is fairly comparable to what it was a year ago. But now, if we go down to the bottom, you'll see the net change in fund balance, $2,090,000 decrease. And you're fighting what everybody else is in North Carolina, decrease in funding, and where do you, where do you cut, or where can you cut? The result, and I'll point out, and you're already aware of this, two, two years ago, June of '12, you had 11 million in fund balance. You're down to 6.8 million. So roughly, four and a half, $5 million decrease over two-year time period. And let's see. The rest, page, let me see if I got that, 17, 18, and 19 are your budget to actual for your major funds. And one of the things that we look at, and that management has to be aware of, is did you overspend what you had budgeted for? And we did not note any over expenditures. And you can see those highlights, you don't have any negative amounts in that far right-hand column for the expenditure part. Page 20 is your balance sheet, if you will, for your proprietary funds or your school food service and childcare. Basically, those services you charge a fee for. Now, at the bottom of the page, I'm focusing again on net position. The school food service fund increased net position from the prior year, and you can see that better on the bottom of page 21. It went from $1,750,000 to $2,790,000. Childcare, on the other hand, went the other direction. There was a decrease of 137,000 in net position, and in the prior year, there was a $38,000 decrease. And I did note, and we don't have comparable numbers here, but I did note the child cared revenue had decreased from 1.4 million to 1.1 million roughly from the prior year. Any questions on the numbers? Because I'm not going to read over the notes to you. You can do that if you can't sleep at night or just get really bored. Okay. Page 50 is our report. We have, there's three more reports that we issued as part of this audit. Page 50 is our consideration of internal control over financial statements, and then over compliance, overall compliance on the financial statements. And basically, we do not issue a report on internal control, but we have to consider it as part of our audit procedures. Are there weak controls, strong controls? And if you've got weak controls, then we need to dig in a little bit deeper. Basically, we did not find any weaknesses or any material weaknesses in your internal controls as relating to financial statements. On page 51, there's part of our report on compliance. We did not find any compliance issues that would affect your financial statements as part of our procedures. And that would include going over budget, or maybe spending money on a grant that wasn't allowed, and then you may have to give money back. We didn't find any of that.
Say that one more time. Say that's what you just said.
The compliance part. The, as far as, when we test compliance of programs, we didn't find any expenditures that didn't qualify for that grant. So, I mean, you could have, I'm not saying here, but there have been cases where people misspent the money, and then the agency comes back and audits them and says, you've got to give the money back. We did not find any of that. Okay. Page 52 and 54 is part, school boards and governments receive money from federal and state agencies. As part of those agencies, if they give you enough money, they want to know that you're spending it like you should be spending it. So we have to have what we call a single audit. They also issue compliance programs that we follow in doing our audit to make sure, okay, these people qualified for this, this expenditure qualified for this guideline, what it may be. On page 57, our list of the programs we tested, and the federal major programs and the state major programs, we tested, and we did not find any compliance issues. And then we're also required to, if you will, gain an understanding of the internal control over those programs, and we found no material weaknesses in those controls relating to those programs. Any questions on that? Okay. One, one more letter to go through, and it's a separate letter, a three-page letter, and it's our required communication to those charged with governance, if you will. And it gives you an overview of the audit process, and if there's any issues that you need to be aware of when we go through the audit. The first page, middle of the page, it talks about significant audit findings, and it refers you to note one, which talks about the accounting policies adopted by the board. And then, in the middle of that, basically, no new policies were adopted during the year, and the application of existing policies was not changed. And then we did not note any transactions during the year for which there's a lack of authoritative guidance. And then all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. Now, everybody thinks accounting is an exact science, but there's always estimates involved in coming up with the financial statements. And the biggest estimate with school boards is determining how much do you depreciate these assets that we have, and over what life, how fast do you depreciate it? And we look over that for reasonableness, determine, okay, the lives haven't changed, depreciation looks reasonable, as far as that goes. The bottom of the page, I'm glad to say there were no significant difficulties in performing the audit. The top of the page, which is a very key one, there were no uncorrected or corrected misstatements. The numbers that we got, that Melissa's people gave to us, were the numbers that showed up on your financial statements. We should give you some comfort when you're looking at the information that they're providing to you. Were there any disagreements with management on accounting issues or whatever? There were none. We do get a management representation lever, it's probably about four or five pages representations back from Melissa and Superintendent Johnson, just confirming the inquiries we've asked, and such as, were there any events happening after year-end that may affect these statements that we're not aware of? Would be a simple one. Another thing that we're required to report to you, but this did not happen, is, are we aware that management consulted with other accountants? In other words, go out opinion shopping or try to figure out, is there a different way to account for something? We're unaware of any of that occurring. And then, the other audit findings or issues, basically, we have ongoing conversations about different accounting issues, but those were not a requirement to hire us as auditors or to retain us, is that. Now, the other matters we've already talked about, we did not audit the management's discussion and analysis, and that we did audit the supplemental information. That's that part.
Any questions? Comments? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. There were two numbers that bothered me, not from being done wrong, they just, I wanted to mention. You went over them. I saw them on a little different pages, because I'm having trouble trying to digest this entire book here. The first number that bothers me is on page 10. During this year, the board's outstanding debt increased by $6.38 million. Members of the board, we cannot continue to do that. That is, that's just not, we've got to figure out a way to reduce our debt. The second thing is the fact that we used $2.1 million of our savings, that's found on page 45. That figures out that this board last year spent about $8 million more than it had. And I do hope that we can figure out how to stop that bleeding before we completely bleed to death. Thank you.
And I would just like to make a, a comment about that as well. Most of that was planned for with the RRA funds. We knew we were going to have to dip into our savings account, so we planned for that. When we got that money, we set it aside.
I think the, I don't know whether everybody else in the state does it or not, but we get a monthly report from our financial area, and a lot of the numbers and a lot of the categories that you're talking about, we hear about every month. Moving of the money and everything, so it's not all strange, and everything seems to be in place in reference to, and I think that's good. So, right, we're using money we don't have, we've gone into the fund balance, we don't, we can't do that forever. But the money that we do have has been handled correctly, that's what you're saying.
Correct.
Has been handled correctly by some, by a group of financial people that we have, led by Ms. White, that are doing a very good job in dealing with the funds that we have.
Yes.
Is that, that's correct, too?
Yes.
And you found no discrepancies, mismanagement, or questions whatsoever?
Nothing of significance.
Anything that you dealt with?
No, nothing of significance. And we're looking at, obviously, if you've got assets of 100-some million, we're looking at a higher level.
Right.
I, I will say, one good thing that you've got, that a lot of school boards in North Carolina don't have, you audit the individual school funds at least once or twice a year, because there could be a lot of issues cropping up.
Right. Yeah, we've instituted that, too, and that has really helped with a lot of the questions that we have. So, any other question or comment? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes. I'll entertain a motion to accept this financial statement.
I'd like to make a motion, will you accept the 2013-14 audited financial statements?
I'll second that.
Second. And I second it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's move to the Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Mr. Todd?
Mr. Kelly, Mr. Johnson, board members, it is my pleasure to be before you again this evening. Last Monday, if you recall, I brought to you a Beginning Teacher Support Plan for the 2014-15 school year. This is an annual plan that we revise and improve, and we discussed this last week and answered any questions you had. I ask for your approval this evening. I'll take any questions.
Any questions or comments? I just have an off-the-wall, does every school system have a plan like this?
Yes, sir.
They do?
Yes, sir.
You almost have to.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's a very good plan, especially to get to the people that are coming in that sometimes, brand-new, look at one thing one way, and yet, when you get here, when you come in, you have to pick up a lot of information in a relatively short time. It's good to see that we have a, an outlined plan to show them as much as we can to help them on their way. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes. We have found that as well.
Any other question or comment? I call for a motion to accept the Beginning Teacher Support Plan.
So moved.
There's a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong has advanced delivery of meeting materials. This is the policy that we've been dealing with now for a couple of months, correct?
This, this will be the first reading. Yes, sir. Policy number 2335 is being amended to reflect the advance, that advanced delivery of meeting materials for the committee of the whole meeting is delivered in five days prior to the meeting, and the materials for the Board of Education meeting be delivered three days prior to the meeting. And the real, the, the change is, for this meeting tonight, that you would have it instead of five days, changing it to three days. This is the first reading.
We've discussed this several times before, and we've come to this conclusion in reference to the policy. Anyone have a comment or a question about this?
Vote on this next month. Is that correct, Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, we'll get the, the packet before the Cal meeting, the Monday before, and then the packet before the board meeting, the second Monday on Wednesday.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move to administration part, and the first one is the public comment. And I have a list here, and the one listed is Steve Rankin. Please come to the podium and identify yourself and what your information is, and we have three minutes. Thank you.
Rankin, how are you?
Board members and Superintendent Mr. Johnson, my name is Steve Rankin. I retired last year with 39 years of service with the Stasiel City and Iroquois Stasiel School Systems. All of my years involved athletics as either a coach or an athletic director. I'm here tonight, along with a couple, not several. I'm here tonight, along with a couple, not several, current coaches and A.D.s, to make you aware of an issue that needs your attention. The issue is the frozen athletic supplement pay scale. Based on the 2013-14 budget, salaries were increased for administrators over four-hundred-thousand dollars. For this year, fourteen administrators were given new contracts with a total of two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars in additional local supplement pay above their state-based salaries. I feel, or felt, I must speak on behalf of our athletic coaches. I was an athletic director at Lake Norman High School when I had to announce to my coaching staff that their supplement pay was being frozen as a cost-cutting measure due to the lack of funding. Well, that was five years ago. Coaching supplements are still frozen on the same pay step or level as they were in the 2010-11 school year. A coach with five years' experience is still being paid as a rookie coach. Older, more experienced coaches who fall in a five-year pay bracket, if you'll see the supplement scale, are still being paid in the lower bracket, instead of being moved up to the higher bracket based on years of experience. With all the monies being found for administrative personnel in the form of salaries or supplements, can we not also find some additional monies for our coaches? I am asking for more than just a one-year step increase. Everyone should be paid based on years of experience. Step one should now be step six. Step sixteen through twenty should move up to step twenty-one through twenty-five, and so on. The information needed to correct this problem can be provided by the individual schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have no other names here with public comment. Are there any, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Then we'll move to the superintendent's comments.
Mr. Kelly, members of the board, I don't know how many years it's been, but probably seven or eight consecutive years that you've heard your financial audit report, as we did tonight. It's almost become routine that the auditor goes to that microphone and commends our finance department for a job well-done. I'd just like to take a moment to remind everybody that this is a very small department, there's eleven people in our finance department. They manage a hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars in tax dollars each year, and from the report that you heard tonight, they did a very commendable job. They also run the largest payroll in the county, with the exception of Lowe's Corporate. Twenty-seven-hundred employees get payroll checks from that department each month. And there's many nights that I'm there at the office, and I see those folks working very, very late, and I would just like to simply say that we're very proud of that department, and do acknowledge the, the work that they do. Back in August of 2014, they received an award from the state treasurer, recognizing them again for the efficiency in the management of tax dollars, and we're very, very proud of them. Each year, Melissa asks me not to say anything about this, because on any given day, you can make one error, and that error would, would not get you the report that you heard tonight. But we're gonna take a, a little risk here, and simply say that for, again, about the seventh or eighth year here, these guys have done an outstanding job, and we thank them for that. I think you received a copy of a, um, um, resolution, a proclamation from our governor, Governor McCroy. This is Disability Employment Awareness Month. I won't take time to read that entire resolution for you, you should have a copy of it in your, in your packet. But I do want to commend our H.R. staff for the work that they do in making sure that our employees that do have disabilities are treated very fairly, and that they are welcomed employees and a strong member of our team in ISS. October is Bullying Awareness Month across our nation, and as you know, a few weeks ago, we had a training at Statesville High School for all of our middle school and high school students. This year, we were joined by the mayors of three of our municipalities in Iredale County, Mayor Kosticutay with the city of Statesville, Mayor Miles Atkins of the town of Morseville, and Mayor Albert Richardson from the town of Troutman. All three of these governing bodies passed this resolution together, and it is a resolution to eradicate bullying from America's public schools. Again, I won't take time to read the entire resolution for you, but it does show the great collaboration that's taking place here in our community, and the fact that bullying is a problem, and that in our community at least, we are being proactive to try to find ways to eradicate bullying in our school system. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do we need a closed session?
I think we do for personnel, yes, sir.
Okay, let me make a couple of announcements before that. November third and fourth are teacher workdays, November third is the committee of the whole meeting next month, November the tenth, we'll meet here again at six, November the eleventh is a holiday, November the twenty-sixth is an annual leave day, and November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth also are holidays. Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, on October twenty-third, Stamy Farms and Mitchell College is having a get-together they have every year, and it's a good chance for us to mingle and go out with our folks. I think Max has been there before, Brady maybe has, and I know Charles, being a retired educator myself, but I think I've got a big opportunity to board, any of them wanna come, it's October twenty-third at Stamy Farms.
What time?
And it starts about six, doesn't it?
About six, six o'clock?
It supports their endowment fund.
It's an endowment, right, supports the endowment fund.
This is true.
And one other note, we did our moment of silence or whatnot, prayer, what everybody does on an individual. In case you didn't know, Brady lost his uncle this week, Mr. Harold Johnson, and he was laid to rest. One of your last, almost last uncles, I think you have one left. And also, we lost a veteran educator, Janice Greider, who was a retired principal from Montpel, so we didn't recognize him or say prayers or say anything, but keep them in your prayers and families. Those two things happened, like I said, this past week, so.
Thank you, Chuck.
Mr. Chairman, I just, since we're all getting to say a little bit, I wanna thank Melissa White for all the work she does. I've sent her about twenty emails a day, asking questions, and that's one person. If I was on one of those game shows and I could call a person, it would be Melissa White that I would call to get the answers from, so I appreciate that. And I also wanna recognize Steve Rankin. Steve has been coaching forever, an athlete forever, and I've, I've had the pleasure of work for him. And Steve, just congratulations on your retirement and all your grandkids, and just thank you for all you've done for Iredale Statesville Schools in the past, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
You might wanna make the motion for? According to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, I'd like to make a motion that the board enter into closed session to discuss terms of a contract.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're now in closed session.